Be taking roll call.
Acting Mayor Shorner.
Here.
Chairman Ovet.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Pannaleone.
Here.
Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Adelman.
Here.
Eight present, zero absent. Mr. Acting Mayor, we have a quorum.
And having a quorum will go to the second item on the agenda, which would be the approval of the minutes from the last meeting, which was amazingly November 5th, 2012. Long time. Do we have any comments on the contents of the meeting minutes?
A move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approved. We're going to go to the third item on the agenda, and we're going too fast at this point because we have to fill some time. But we're going to review the city's water transmission main study that was performed recently to evaluate the system after this last summer's dilemmas. And this is going to be presented by Bob Ells. And Bob, again, talk slowly.
I can do that.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I am here tonight to brief you on the results of the 2012 Water Distribution System Study. Up on the screen, if you want to take a few minutes and look at that, is a layout of the existing water main transmission system within the city of Lake Forest right now. In April of 2012, the city contracted with McManon Associates to both update the computerized hydraulic model of the distribution system and to evaluate the integrity of the system. The original model was first developed in 1996 and has been updated in 2000 and again in 2008. The last update recommended three water main transmission upgrades that were completed between 2008 and 2011. Those were Western Avenue, Waukegan Road, and North Owani Lane to Western Avenue. The model primarily includes transmission mains, that is mains 10 inches and larger, which carry water across the system, not the six and eight inch mains that run through your subdivisions that are primarily bringing water to your residents. The goals of the study included updating the model to include all of the capital improvement projects and private development upgrades since 2008. Another goal was to evaluate the capacity of the system, and finally to identify any deficiencies within the distribution system. The highlights of the study results are as follows. The minimum and normal working pressures throughout the distribution system fall within the acceptable standard range. The available fire flow capacities throughout the system meet or exceed minimum requirements. The current transmission system is sufficient to provide the needed water throughout the system. And as a footnote to that, was not included in the summary, that should be in your packet, towards the end of the study, McMahon was asked to look at the proposed expansion at the hospital. And they did that using the proposed usage data that was provided by the hospital at the time, I believe that was back in November. And they concluded that the system does have enough capacity today, enough pressure today, to accommodate that hospital upgrade without any upgrades needed to the system. They did have a caveat to that, basically saying, "We need to pay attention to how they plan to address their irrigation on that site." We really don't have that information from the hospital. But they said that they should be looking at using either a well or their existing and proposed detention and not rely on the city water plant to provide that water. Some of the other results from the study were that there are no significant system deficiencies in the distribution system at this time. No urgent upgrades to the distribution system are currently needed. And it should be noted again that those comments address primarily the 10-inch and larger transmission mains, not the smaller mains throughout the subdivisions. We currently replace those mains annually, focusing on areas where we have a lot of water main breaks or where there's old mains, and we are getting ready to do a street resurfacing project when the main is under the road to get those out from under there before the work is done.
So was there an attempt to look for leaks in the system? Because we apparently have some. You know, we've had discrepancies in our, you know, water drills for years. And the explanation was, "Well, it's just slippage from the system."
Under this study, no leaks were not. That was not part of this study. The city does leak detection separately from this study. This was mainly to look at the capacity of the system.
We were talking earlier about a well, a potential well for the Deer Path Golf Course. And considering its proximity to the hospital with a, obviously, 41 bisects the area, but if there could be any cooperation there, that might be a good idea. Because they can't put in a well without us approving it, right? You can't have a well in Lake Forest.
That's correct, sir.
But if they needed one, we could get ours paid for.
Something.
Or share costs.
Most definitely.
Some kind of cost share thing. It's a lot of landscaping, but.
Right. And at this time, we have not heard from the hospital what their plans are, what kind of landscaping. It may be that they can use their existing detention ponds to take care of the irrigation. That's an unknown at this time.
And again, maybe to fill time, but just comment on it. Yeah, obviously, we've, at this point, gone through a recession. There hasn't been much building in Lake Forest since the last study was performed. So it's been fairly static as far as new projects having demand on the system. But we're using more water. And, you know, granted, the last summer was unusual in long dry spells and heat. But it seems like the increased demand going on in the water system is residential irrigation systems. Has there been, or just again, just for understanding, does the city license or register the irrigation systems that are put in by homeowners so we could keep track of the number of them?
Yes, sir. They're permitted. They have to come in for a permit, so there is a record. I believe the number is since the water plant was put in, there have been 1,100 permits.
Okay. Which is, yeah, a huge number.
Very significant, yes.
And without transcending into the other subjects, do we charge at all on an annual basis to keep track of the systems? I'm thinking as far as when we're talking about water usage on off days, and this might be a better question for the next topic. If we did charge a nominal fee to license them, that we could allow them to water on specific days as part of the license we grant on a yearly basis, just an idea, so we'd be able to enforce it. But again, there seems to be this exponential increase. Even I'm thinking about putting some type of watering system in because my front lawn looks so horrible. But again, it's only going to increase. It's probably not going to decrease. Go on.
One thing that the report mentioned as a possibility that we probably ought to consider is, and I don't know to what extent we can actually build this, but is the idea of having a different rate for, you know, a different rate per whatever gallon for irrigation versus, you know, regular tap water or water that's used inside the house. Does that mean everybody has to get a second water meter when they get their irrigation system? How do you backfit the ones that are already there? I don't know what the practicalities are, but that struck me as a pretty good idea because that seems to be where the excess requirement is coming from. And at least if we're going to have to add capacity, let's let the people that are causing that pay for it.
Victor's hands up there.
One thing to consider, given the time and the time we have, is that if the notion is part of the conservation of water, it's not merely sprinklers, but we've had instances, and I'm sure Bob or Mike can talk about this as well, where people have leaks in their internal house system, and there's a very significant amount of water usage because of that. There is the ability, if the city so chooses, to have differential rates, you know. It used to be that your water rate went down if you used more, sort of bulk discount. That was before there was sensitivity to the, you know, to the notion of conservation. Now, a number of communities actually have done just the opposite, that if you exceed a certain amount of water in any given billing period, you actually, for that excess, have a higher rate. And I think that may be administratively a little more easily implemented.
Right.
Than to try to retrofit secondary meters if they're not already.
Right.
What about gray water systems? I mean, maybe not today, but 50, 100 years from now, we're all taking water for granted. It could be like gasoline in 100 years. I know the golf course is considering besides going to a well, looking into alternative sources of water, gray water possibly, stormwater runoff. Do you see on a residential level being futuristic at all, many gray water systems for homeowners? It's a shame to use treated water on your lawn.
I have not seen that used anywhere residentially. Golf Course is the big one, you know, nationwide. They do that industrial type areas. I've not read or seen anything. We've been doing some research just lately about the whole water rate study and as it, you know, relates to conservation, and I've not seen anything in that regard.
I might supplement. One of the issues with gray water is that most residential plumbing systems aren't designed for that. There's a separate set of requirements under the Illinois Plumbing Code, which governs all plumbing within the state for gray water systems. And those are relatively new regulations. So except for either homes that are going through some kind of retrofit or are relatively new construction, I'm going to say within the last three to five years, gray water probably wasn't even an option in the way that the plumbing systems were designed.
Right.
That's not to say that they can't be retrofitted, but that would be an additional cost that, you know, I don't know whether homeowners would be inclined to do that just independently.
Bob, I've got an engineering question for you. It looks like the main from the water treatment plant out to the storage tank on Route 60 is 36 inches down to 24, down to 20. Most of it's 20-inch main. What do you use to pump that? Is there just one giant pump down at the water treatment plant? Or are there pumps staged along the line that put it up in the tank? What kind of flowage rates do you get? I'm just kind of curious.
I'll have to ask Michael how many pumps are at the water treatment plant. I don't know that.
We have four high lift pumps, and that is basically what pumps the water out to the elevated tank. We also have booster station at Waukegan and Wesley. So the system truly is working the booster station, the water tower, and the water plant. We're constantly changing the pumps and the volumes coming out of those three systems. We're doing it 24/7, 365. And especially now in the winter, you don't want the water tower to freeze and turn into an ice cube, so you're constantly moving water around in the system.
What kind of flowage rates do those pumps have?
PSI, when we're, I'm going to say east of McKinley and Western, we're probably up around 55, 60 PSI. Getting up towards Green Bay, we, the highest point in town, will drop closer to 45 or so. And then when we get back out west in the fourth ward in that area, because we have the booster station, water tower out there, we have probably some of the better pressures in town. So if you're on the northeast and the east side of town, and in the far western side of town, the pressures are good. Towards the middle, the ridge where Green Bay Road is, you're trying to get water up and over, and that's where pressures dip.
Thank you. Pulling back the topic, at least from the study, and as we looked at Lake Forest and its water system last July, when we were almost in crisis, at least on review, we seemed to be where we need to be. Capacity is fine. Transmission of the water in the system seems to be fine. And if we just continue on a path of maybe increasing the diameter of certain pipes in certain areas, we're fine for about the next five years, at least according to the study.
Correct. And that, thank you for the lead in, that's the, the next item was some of the areas that McMahon suggested we keep an eye on. And that is, the big one is, in the event that the demands do increase over 14 million gallons a day on a consistent basis, they are suggesting an additional east-west transmission main. And that would be bringing the, increasing the capacity between Western Avenue and Waukegan Road. They, I believe back in the 2008 study, they had identified three possible routes for that: Deer Path, Onwensia, and Wesley Road. As you can imagine, these would be very costly projects. You're talking in the range of anywhere from $6 to $8 million to bring, you know, a 24-inch transmission main across there. So that's something that while it's not presently needed, we'll have to watch the trends as far as the water plant goes and keep an eye on that.
If we were going to guess or project, how many years out would that be if we did need it?
That information is not known right now at the current levels. And the study that was done includes projected population, projected development, that everything is good. So you have the, of course, the weather. What we went through last year, was that an anomaly? If it was, then we're good.
Okay.
They also suggested continue to monitor the output from the water treatment plant and be prepared to start planning for expansion in the event that irrigation demands consistently exceed the supply during the summer months, as it did last year. And they also recommended that we continue to do what we do in the residential areas every year, and that's increase, replace water, the old water mains, most of which are six-inch diameter mains. They recommend eight-inch minimum, which is what we do now. That helps with the pressure, helps with capacity, and of course, helps with the loss of service from main breaks.
Sounds like we're on the right path. Are there any other comments, at least on this topic? Or should we move to the next topic?
I have one regarding Alderman Pannaleone's comments on gray water. That was you, right?
Nope.
No.
No, I think it was Mike.
Oh, no, okay, down here, sorry. You know, when you redo your house now, you have to put, I think it's an inch and a half or inch and a quarter water main into your house? What is it, Kathy? Inch and a half? And we had a three-quarter coming to our house, and that was because someday we might put sprinkler systems in. So if there was a gray water, black water separation that would account for something happening 50 years from now, that might not be a, to, who had the gray water discussion? Who was it? Oh, okay. That might be a way to get ready for it and not talk about retrofit, but new houses.
Well, I think the waste is the issue. You've got sanitary waste and gray water waste, black, gray.
Right.
So you'd need two waste systems constructed in your house today.
When they build new, I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
New homes would require the system to be kept separate till the point of the sewer.
Right.
So a new fit could be, could be done, that sort of thing. I mean, like, like we're ready for sprinkler systems in residential houses with the water mains, which may not happen for a couple of decades or sooner, I don't know, but.
Yeah, that's foreseeable. That's going to happen. I think you'd still want an inch and a half water service just for pressure up on the second floor.
That was it, sorry.
Okay, any other comments on this topic? And if not, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the committee.
Okay, and having no other comments on that topic, we're going to move to the fourth item on the agenda, which would be starting a preliminary discussion on the water conservation program. Mike, are you going to take that, or?
I will take that, yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, the whole. This evening's staff would like to present our first rollout of the items that we plan to use for conservation efforts with regards to upcoming year's irrigation system. Put up on the screen here soon, an advisory system that we develop basically using the same color code effort that Homeland Security has used. You've got your various colors: green, blue, yellow, orange, and red. Remember in July of last year, we went through some significant stressful times down at the water plant trying to be able to meet demand. Our regular pumpage during the day to supply residents throughout town is about 4 million gallons, a little bit less than 4 million. July last year, we were upwards of 13, 14 million gallons, so that delta was purely for irrigation purposes. Water revenue for our capital plan was excellent, and we appreciate that. But the other challenge to that is being able to manage that water system as I described. You've got the water tower, the booster station, and the water plant. And getting those to work properly and maintaining all the pressures and the volumes that you need becomes very challenging. So if you remember, we went through a series, and it began on the morning of the Fourth of July, where we had to put signs out. And we quickly changed those signs to saying odd-even irrigation, to banning irrigation, to going around and notifying residents that they needed to shut their water off. Reason we do that, if we drop in the elevation of the water tower down to 20 feet, it has a maximum of 46 feet in the bowl. If we drop below 20, it drops pressure in town below 20 PSI. We drop below 20 PSI, we need to have a mandatory boil order. We've never done that, and I really do not want to be on call as the director when that happens. So what we are, what we are trying to institute is something that can assist the residents that is very clear for them to understand when, in fact, we need to ask them to back off on the irrigation. So what you have in front of you are two charts per se. The one on the left is the one we are proposing, and I worked with Susan Banks on this to develop for the public to use, that we would put possibly in dialogue, obviously on our website, Lake Forester, et cetera, so people would clearly understand what level we were at if, in fact, we do not receive timely rain. If we receive timely rain, we won't be in the issue we had last July. But if we don't receive rain, then we begin to have challenges. The chart on the right, then, is more for our internal use, and it's really the terms that we use on a daily basis and things that we understand that need to have, need to occur when we're moving up. Staple to that are restrictions that, again, this gets very detailed. The second page is, again, simply for internal use. We're not proposing to share this with the public, but we wanted to at least explain to you how the different colors correlated to the issues we would be having at the various stations. So, for example, if we're at the low level at our water plant, we've got pumpage less than 10 million gallons, and lake temp is greater than 50, 50 degrees Fahrenheit. What you can see is we move up through, over on the right side, and again, the different color codes moving up, things are changing in the system. Either the demand is increasing, lake temp is down, we have certain problems in our water system. So when we look at these charts, these color-coded charts, when we move from low to guarded or to elevated, that typically is what we found, and it's happened to us probably three or four times since we turned the plant on in 2004. Those we move through at a slow pace. When we get to that elevated, we can very quickly move up to the orange or the severe or the red level, simply because if people or residents are not adjusting quickly enough, we will continue to have problems at our water plant. And it really comes down to a very simple being able to fill the system up during the day, because in the overnight hours, we get hit extremely hard. So we need those 12 hours of the day to build up the water tower, to build up the booster station across from West Campus, and to build up our reservoir at the water plant. So if people, if we can educate residents to turn off during the day, that will be extremely helpful. Number two, if we can get residents to irrigate every other day, that will be extremely helpful. And we at least predict we shouldn't have many problems. But again, this is a system that we think people could easily understand and could get the message. So we at least wanted to share it with you this evening and get your thoughts. This is simply one part of the whole conservation topic that we will be developing over the next couple of months. And the different various public relation pieces that we'll be putting together so we are ready to go from Memorial Day on. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any thoughts on this.
My thought is that for the public, five colors is too many. You've got to have three colors because, you know, it loses its meaning. City to know what the differences are, I think is one thing, but I think the average public is not going to respond well to that. So just a thought.
Okay. Very good. And we can, we can adjust that easily.
I think along the same lines, when there's an irrigation ban, and then there's one that's enforced, and then there's one that's enforced plus signs, it just sounds like we didn't mean it the first time, and we kind of meant it the second time. It should be a ban, and you should get tickets, or it shouldn't be a ban. Right? I mean, otherwise, how do you know it's a ban, but this isn't the one? This isn't the one where you get tickets. So fix it next week, or?
You're right. It's more so the effort on staff standpoint in simply, in simple essence. Putting signs out at the street corner, then we move up to police, sanitation personnel, anybody that's driving throughout town can knock on a door and ask the resident to turn off. To the third and final level of, we're going to issue, or we will ask the police department to issue tickets, but I understand your point.
But is there, are we, we're already decided here, right? There's always going to be an odd-even from last summer going forward.
Correct, correct.
We've already done that?
That's something that we are proposing that we do.
We already did that.
We've, we've always, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, for anybody that takes water from Lake Michigan, May 15 through September 15, has always given that as a guideline for communities to follow. It's up to each individual community as far as how much enforcement they would like to do with that. And we have in the past chosen not to enforce it, simply because we've been able to meet that demand. But as those irrigation permits grow and more and more people irrigate in the summer months, we're having more and more challenges at our water plant to be able to meet that demand. So circumstances have changed, and that is why we need to at least try and educate the residents to irrigate every other day before we come and ask for a multimillion-dollar expansion of the water plant to meet demand for irrigation systems. In essence, that's what it would be. So we want to try this first.
Since the odd-even thing doesn't work, because every month doesn't have the same number, and we talked about setting up the schedules, why not do a six, six-day program where it's, you know, this, these house numbers get Mondays, Wednesdays, you know, Fridays, the other ones get Tuesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays, and then you have one day that's off for everybody? Because the, at least the system I have, which is pretty old, is structured according to the day of the week. And it seemed to me that that would allow people to easily set it that way. And then you don't have to worry, "Oh, my system went off. It wasn't really me, so I shouldn't get a ticket," you know, that sort of thing.
Okay. That's sure, that's an idea we can, we can look at. There are various trends, we know, on Mondays for some, and we know why. Monday is laundry day in town. And you can tell at the water plant through about noon, you wouldn't believe the pumpage, but it's every Monday morning. So there are trends that we can react accordingly, as you suggest, possibly certain days we try and back off.
Mike, just again, to pull back to a little more normality, last summer, obviously, was an aberrant summer. Demand was higher. In a 10-year span, how many years have we had similar conditions the last summer?
We put the new water plant into service in April of 2004. Since then, we've had three separate instances: June of 2005, excuse me, yeah, June 2005, July of 2007, and then July of last year. So we've had three instances that were pretty significant. And again, I go back to, we watch all of our parameters at the booster station, the elevated tank, and the elevated tank is really the thing that drives us, because we know if we are dropping significantly in that tank and we're giving everything we can out of that plant, if we hit 20... out of that plant, if we hit 20, then we've got to do a boil order. And for the guys operating the plant, and when they're by themselves in the nighttime hours, it's pretty scary, because you've got, your whole water system is based on us being able to maintain pressure and volume, and when you're giving everything you got, and you still can't fill up, those, that becomes a challenge.
Okay.
So, Dan, your question, three times, three times since 2004.
Okay, so fairly often.
Yeah.
Any other comments on this topic, or?
Yeah, putting my finance chair hat on for a moment, you know, if we're really successful at driving consumption down, we need to look at the rates, because we're going to have a pretty negative revenue impact. So, just put that on the table for everybody to think.
Well, and Alderman, I would say that that's one of the reasons we're bringing this to you this evening, and we will officially be bringing it back to you probably in March or April, because we want it each year, when we put the even and odd in place, that the city council formally take an action, so it's in the minutes and so forth. But it's a balancing act, because we want people to water not too much, and so that's really why we're sort of treading lightly on where we go from this, because you're right, I think we can work with people and have them be a little more conscious of how to appropriately water their yards and their landscaping, but we still want them to do it, because really, when you get down to it, the June, July, August, and September, possibly, are the months we really make our money.
That's it. We look at our water system, Bob is absolutely correct. The other months are flat, and we can tell you almost to a T how many gallons we're going to pump in February, January, March, and December, but it really is the June, July, August timeframe that if we have rain, we don't pump as much, on the other hand, if it's dry, we pump as much as we can.
We've looked at, we've looked at this, I just don't recall the answer, but, I mean, how do our water rates compare to neighboring communities today? You know, if we didn't change.
I think I have the answer, and if I say we're in the middle, am I correct, Elizabeth?
Yeah, and we'll have an update February and October.
Okay.
So, I guess the point being, there's probably room, if just rate to rate, to make some adjustments if we think we're going to be driving consumption down and equalize the revenue, so.
We weren't giving it away, as I remember, we were in the middle of the pack. But if the trade-off is conservation versus bumping the rates a little, I'm all for the conservation and bumping the rates.
Well, just think about the load that it takes off the capital plant, for one thing, you know, the risk that's out there. I mean, that can be, I don't know, what was the, what was the number you put on the table, Bob, to put a main, you know, an attic, a million, that was millions of dollars, if I remember, so.
For the transmission main, and $60 million to run a 24-inch main down Leslie. A lot of money.
Any other comment on this topic? And just so we kind of keep on schedule, next item on the agenda would be just an update on capital improvement projects and studies that are going to be coming up during the course of the year.
Again, staff would want it this evening to present to you a simple update. We presented these capital projects at your November budget meeting, and from that point, we've been developing the specifications, and we will be going out to bid for these projects over the next couple of months. Mary has been extremely busy with developing the specifications and doing a good amount of surveying work. Those that have the parentheses next to it, that's a, let's say, NPI, that is the Municipal Partnering Initiative, meaning that we are working with other towns and going out to bid together to try to gain the economy of scale. So, the one that we, the City of Lake Forest, are managing this year is our overlay program. Last year, we did it with Highland Park, Lincolnshire, and Lake Bluff. This upcoming year, we're simply going to do it with Lake Bluff. We're going to manage that, so we'll be going out to bid soon. For that one specifically, and we'll highlight what we found last year on the overlay program is it simply got too big. There were too many communities involved. Baker left town for a long time and didn't come back in, and they were fulfilling the contract requirements, they were just in Lincolnshire, or they were in Highland Park. So, we're going to shorten up the span, go back to what we've always done, where we want the overlay contractor to get in town shortly after school ends, and have them out of town before school begins. So, we've chosen to manage the overlay program. The others are some projects that we are contracted out on a regular basis, the lawn line striping, the sewer lining, but again, the major projects, we are currently going out to bid, and we will be bringing them to you over the next couple of months to proceed with the summer construction. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, the first one being Forest Park improvements, the bid openings on the, yes, today?
This morning.
Can we get a spreadsheet of that before councils ask to approve it on the 19th?
And I think, I'm not sure, but we're going to be, I think, pushing that project off until the fall, but I'll let.
We opened bids this morning, Alderman, and staff has had a chance to look at them. We actually have a meeting tomorrow morning with Forest Park Project Board, because they have to look at what they're responsible for and the timing of their funding and so forth. So, we will report to you on the 19th, whether we bring it forward to you for action, or whether we push it off to later on in the year is going to be dependent upon our meeting tomorrow morning.
Okay, great. And any further comment on this topic? Okay, and there isn't, I've been trying to keep a slow pace here. Next item on the agenda would be opportunity for public comment, and assuming that there's none, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting at this point.
So moved.
Before I get into it, should we adjourn the meeting and then go for a discussion on items on the city council agenda, or?
I would suggest if you want to at least have an overview of those in advance of the council meeting, let's do it as part of this meeting, because we'll still be convened in a properly noted public meeting.
Okay, so hold off on that second, and.
I withdraw my motion.
We'll come back to it and get credit. On the agenda for city council, are there items that we might want to discuss? A lot of them are kind of repetitive of what we've gone over at past meetings, so I'm really.
I suggest one, maybe Alderman Pendeleon wants to talk about the auditing services, and we also have the chairman of the audit committee here as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not to put you on the spot.
Sounds like a great idea. The most recent audit committee meeting, which I want to say was about two weeks ago, we interviewed three different audit firms, the incumbent, which was McLandry, and then two others, Sickich and Virchow Kraus, Baker Tilly, which used to be Virchow Kraus. I got the old name better than the new name. The presentations were interesting, actually, if an audit presentation can be interesting. There was, you know, some discussion about methodologies and different levels of inquiry and investigation and testing and so forth, and what we concluded, and I don't want to steal too much thunder, but what we concluded was that we were pretty happy with both the cost and the quality that we were getting from our incumbent, and there were pros and cons to the other two bids, but I think it was unanimous decision to continue with the scope that we've been using, which is extensive. One, I was going to mention this actually at another point, but one interesting comment that was made by all three of the candidates when asked, you know, what's unique about Lake Forest, they all said, all three of them said, the fact that you have an audit committee. And I was a little surprised at that, but then I was reading today about the, in the news, about the auditor for Dixon.
Small community.
It's hard to imagine that, you know, they, well, they had, actually, it was a major firm that had farmed out some of the work, and it, there'd been some, I think the controller probably was choosing the auditor. But anyway, it was interesting, and I think we, I was very impressed to hear kind of from that perspective, and, you know, some of the things that are coming down the pike that could be, I don't want to say exposures, but things we're going to have to deal with, largely having to do with how pensions are accounted for. And so it was very, it was actually very informative, but in the final analysis, I think the recommendation we're going to be asked to approve tonight is that we maintain our relationship with McLandry going forward, at least for the next couple of years. And now, there's nothing to talk about on that subject.
The only other one, I'll give you a quick update in your packet on the omnibus is, well, two items. Number one, we will be recommending to the council that they pull the item on Stonegate off the omnibus and just move it to the regular city council agenda, so we can have a conversation about that. We did, the city attorney did get a letter from the attorney representing one of the residents there, so we want to just have an opportunity in the public meeting to talk about that. And I would also just point out, in the number five on the omnibus, which is the approving the First Amendment to the North Shore Electric Aggregation Consortium, you may remember, a year ago, when we entered into the consortium, it was just for a one-year agreement, and I think the thought was, we'll go into this one year, we'll bid it out, and then we move on. As the group got involved in it, though, we felt that there was some value to keeping the community, keeping the consortium together, and working on other items, including, not just the rebidding of the electric supply, but in looking at other opportunities for energy efficiencies and other similar subjects matters. The item that's before you this evening really extends that consortium out, number one. Number two, allows us to go out and rebid for years two and three of the contract with MC Squared, and I would say that it's a very opportune time to be out in the market right now. Pricing is very competitive, and so we're probably going to be, in the next 30 to 45 days, locking up another, at least another year, if not another two years of electric charges for our residents. And hopefully, while the savings may not be quite as large as we've experienced, and I think in your packet, they're estimating that for Lake Forest residents, it will be about 3.2, or $3.5 million, that there will still be substantial savings over the course of the next two years, as you compare it with Commonwealth Edison rates that are out there. I will mention, though, the other projects that we've worked on is that we did secure some outside funding to do building audits, and we have, and Mike Thomas can probably talk about this much better than I, but we have a company that is currently doing an audit of our water plant and all of the pumps and other equipment at the water plant to see if there is a way to reduce our energy consumption at the water plant, which is one that we have to pay for. That's not covered through the franchise agreement. So that came out of one of these consortium initiatives, and also the consortium is looking at jointly bidding out electric charging stations. I think we're all in the same position, that none of us want to operate our own electric charging stations, but if we collectively come together, that we can possibly bid it out and see about putting a couple in each of our communities and letting some third-party outside company operate those facilities as well. So that's just an example of some of the other projects that the consortium has undertaken after they've come together. With that, I have absolutely nothing else from the agenda.
We've done pretty well in 45 minutes. It's beyond expectation. Before we adjourn, I'm just going to throw one topic out there that's been, it's been an annoying topic, at least for me, for a long period of time, and this weekend I had an event where I almost found one again, but I don't know if there's any way, I know the city's been very reluctant to do anything with the boulders on the side of the road in East Lake Forest, but as it gets icy and your cars go into a small skid, the boulders get bigger and bigger. If there's any way that we could maybe have an ordinance to study in the future, just to push them off the roadway a foot or two, because at least I know in Washington Circle, they're starting to actually encroach onto the roadway, and it's a danger in my mind. It's nerve-wracking, and I'm sure for those poor guys that are trying to plow the streets from what little snow we've had, it's a complete danger. But just a thought, had to kind of get it off my chest there.
Well, Alderman, you'll be happy to know that when we've had this conversation in the past, it has been before the Public Works Committee, so we'll make sure that we bring it before either the next or one of the future Public Works Committees, because it has been an issue that's been out there for some time, and there's really no good resolution, but I think it bears revisiting.
Yeah, even if it's merely a plea to be a good neighbor, that you could roll them back a foot or two off the street line, it would be a tremendous help, and it would calm me down a little bit. Thanks.
Are they supposed to be back a certain distance from the road?
They are, is it 18 inches? 18 inches, and unfortunately, they creep closer to.
I believe it is 18 inches, and residents are asked to come in and apply for a permit that Community Development, Public Works, Parks and Forestry review, and there are standards. There's size standards, there's location standards.
If it's on the road, I know of one that is not 18 inches from the road.
We have not, but you are, we have not gone out aggressively to inventory these, nor search and move back. If they become an issue, then we've responded accordingly, but you're correct, we.
Yeah, when we put the stones out, the first winter, didn't know about the 18-inch rule, they moved them. Your, this was, I think we moved into our current house in 97, or 96, but, yeah, we put them right on the edge of the road, too, because we live on a corner.
If we receive complaints, the code enforcement officer does send out code courtesy notices requesting that people move them back. We have gone out, I personally gone out in the dead of night and moved some back, so it's kind of a, you know, it's a never-ending saga.
I thought it was like a pre-plowing inspection, is that, no, it was another life?
I'm not sure, as far as, do we, did an inspection occur? No?
We don't do any full city review. We respond based on complaints. We have certain areas where we know the boulders get pushed back by us, and then they roll them forward, so there's a couple on our hot list, but we don't do a full city boulder review.
Okay, just on a boulder vigilante is pushing them back. Oh.
Kent, I think, Kent, I think the term is rock star.
If Bob's going to start making jokes, I'm looking for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Meeting adjourned. Yeah, sorry, couldn't.